Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, May 29th, 2011 Valley View School District Board Meeting. We have a big crowd and hopefully a relatively short agenda this evening. If you would, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Goojus.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic, our wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome again. We will now be led by Mr. Curran with the Board Affirmation Mission Statement.
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through rigorous curricula and meaningful effective instruction consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments and all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you. Dr. Mitchum, Board Approval or Agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the Agenda revisions, removing Items 9.4, Middle School Promotion Policy from the Agenda.
Have a motion to remove the Middle School Promotion Policy? So moved. Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in same sign, the ayes have it. Motion to approve the Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Moving down the Agenda, Mr. Mitchum, Consent Agenda Items.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the Board to approve Consent Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.5, Board Meeting Minutes, May 14th, 2012, Executive Session Meeting Minutes, May 14th, 2012, Educational Enrichment Foundation, 2013, 1213 Grant Acceptance, Authorization to Prepare Tentative Budget for Fiscal Year 2012 and 13, and Gifts, Jonas Salk Elementary School.
So moved.
Motion in second. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Lawler to come up if he is here. He is, in the back of the room, and discuss with us the enrichment grants. Grants are always nice things, Mike, thank you for your efforts. Trustee Mike Lawler, also the President of the Valley View Enrichment Foundation, Trustee of the Village of Bowling Green. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, President Quigley. Just a quick comment, I've provided a memo with an outline. This year, we had 65 grant requests requesting over $85,000. With our fundraising efforts so far and a few more which I'll talk about in a moment, we will be awarding 20 grants for $34,900 or $34,800 to a number of schools throughout the year. The announcements will go out tomorrow morning, we'll have the letters ready tonight, so all the grant applicants regardless of their status will be notified of the status by Thursday, it'll go out through inter-office mail. We request, as we have done in previous years, if we're successful in continuing fundraising efforts, we would like to come back and provide more money throughout the year, we've designated several other grants that we would like to fund, so we'll be working with district administration and staff to get the word out. We're gonna do a nine-hole golf outing on July 9th, and we'll get the word out to the press about that and work to get folks signed up for that, and then a back-to-school block party where we, in addition to raising funds for the foundation, will be accepting school supplies for needy families at that event on August 4th at the Promenade. But I'll just take that, those announcements, and hope that you'll accept the funds that we put together for you tonight.
Gratefully, and how long have you been, how long has the foundation been alone?
This is our 18th year serving the students of Valley View.
And how much money have you raised in 18 years?
This year, we're, last year, we won over a million dollars of funds donated to the schools. All the programs are designed by teachers, administrators, and families have gotten involved as well, so we've been, we're now over the $1,100,000 mark.
Thank you very much for all the efforts and all those that are involved. With that, we have a motion in a second, roll call vote would be in order.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowles?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Moving down the Agenda, Student and Staff Recognition, Pillars of Valley View, Dr. Mitchum.
First, we'd like to introduce the Principal from Independence Elementary School, Mrs. Kim Mulcahy.
Good evening, Members of the Board of Education, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership, and Members of the Valley View community. Our pillar tonight, Ms. Megan Healy, began her employment with the Valley View School District at Independence eight years ago. In addition to teaching 5th grade during her tenure, Ms. Healy has contributed in many different ways, both at the school and the district level. At Independence, she has been a member of our universal leadership team, she currently chairs and has for many years chaired our reading design team, and has made numerous presentations to parents at evening events. At the district level, Ms. Healy has been active in many literacy initiatives over the years, and is currently serving on both the K-12 Literacy and the K-1 Curriculum Committees. Megan will be a presenter at the Summer Institute in August as well. She embraces the use of data to differentiate instruction in her classroom, she partners with other teachers and support personnel to promote co-teaching as a model of instruction that enhances student learning outcomes, and has made an impact on the future of education by sharing her expertise with many student teachers. Her tireless dedication to promoting literacy development in all of the students in the Valley View School District is what makes her our nomination as a pillar of Valley View. Congratulations, Megan.
Tibbet, Principal Anna Wilson.
Board of Education, Senior Leadership, and Members of the Valley View Community, it must be a Megan night. It is an honor to be able to present to you, Mrs. Megan Berto, Berto, sorry, I'm still getting used to the name, Tibbet's nominee for Pillar of Valley View. Megan was nominated by her peers at JRT with us in full agreement. As a 3rd grade teacher, Megan has been an inspiration to students, colleagues, and parents. She embodies what we hope for in our Tibbet Tigers. Megan fully embraces the true meaning of teacher. She is dedicated to her students and shows this in her daily actions, whether through her interactions with the students, her innovative teaching strategies, or her willingness to be at the forefront of curriculum. She has served as a mentor to colleagues and student teachers, been a leader on committees, and served as a liaison between our PTO and staff. Megan is not satisfied with the status quo. Even though she already has a master's degree, she continues to pursue her ELL endorsement in order to meet the needs of our bilingual students as they transition into her class. Megan is truly deserving of the Pillar of Valley View designation. We are proud of all her efforts to guide our students on the road to college. I present to you Megan Berto.
And finally, from our Professional Development Department, our Director of PD, Mrs. Elizabeth Martinez.
Good evening, Board Members, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership, and VVSD Community. We, the Professional Development Team, believe the foundation of successful teaching is professional development, and the individual who binds all departments and buildings together is Lisa Langer. Few realize the impact that Lisa has because she performs her responsibilities like a swan on a lake, with grace and majesty above the surface and strength and energy below.
Lisa started her career in Valley View School District as a secretary at Independence Elementary School, and joined the Professional Development Department in 2010. Lisa has served her community in every capacity possible. She is a parent and an advocate for children. She volunteers her time as a booster at Romeville High School, and has been a leader amongst her peers as a presenter and organizer of Secretary Institute.
For those that have had the privilege of working with Lisa, a few words instantly come to mind: calm yet enthusiastic, generous and optimistic, kind, and of course, a perfectionist. During the time that Lisa has been a part of the department, the amount of professional development in the district has more than doubled. Yet Lisa manages all of these training opportunities from start to finish, with an attention to detail that is beyond compare. There are countless documents that need organization, and Lisa keeps everything together so that we are in compliance with state regulations. It's estimated that Lisa has registered and organized substitute teachers for over 1,000 teachers in our district. She's always willing to help with logistics such as setup, cleanup, and many other special requests.
Lisa is the driving force behind the scenes of all professional development during the school year and during the summer. All of this is done with grace despite deadlines and the inevitable surprises that would throw many off course. Lisa is a true pillar in every sense of the word. She is strong and dependable, and we are honored to work with her. Thank you, Lisa, for all you do, and happy birthday.
Thank you. Moving down the Agenda, Jane Addams Symphonic Band, Dr. Mitchum.
Good evening, would any of the Jane Addams Band members were able to make this evening come on up over here? As things, hi, I'm Chris Shaff, I'm the Principal of Jane Addams Middle School. Unfortunately, this evening, come on over here, guys. Mrs. Zabinski, who is our band director, came down with the flu, so she was unable to attend. Normally, I just introduce the person who does all the hard work and then they-
Hey guys, move in this way so you can be on TV. Come on, come on, come on.
I think you startled something.
Come on.
And then-
Okay, now you're on TV.
And then I get out of the way, and they do, and then the staff who did all the hard work gets the recognition. Unfortunately, Mrs. Zabinski was unable to be here tonight. Additionally, today was the day of our 8th grade trip, so a good number of our band members were unable to attend due to that trip. So these proud but few behind me represent the 50. Now I'll go back to the script. The Jane Addams Middle School Symphonic Band won first place in their classification and best overall band at the Music in the Park Festival's competition at Cedar Point Amusement Park in Sandusky, Ohio on Friday, May 18th. The competition was part of a three-day band trip that was the culmination of their hard work for the school year. The 50 band students, their seven chaperones, and their director, Ms. Carlos Zabinski, all stopped at Bowling Green State University in Bowling Green, Ohio, to take part in a band clinic with Dr. Bruce Moss, the Director of Bands at the university, and the Director of the Wheaton Municipal Band. They also visited the Henry Ford Museum in Dearborn, Michigan on their way home from Ohio. Mrs. Zabinski is very proud of her students, their hard work, as well as how they positively represented Jane Addams Middle School and our school district while on the trip. Their accomplishments this year also include a first rating at the Illinois Grade School Music Association Competition in March. And instead of me reading all 50 names of the kids who aren't here, we're gonna have you guys say your name, and then go and shake hands, and I'll meet you over there with your certificates, okay? Lindsay, we first.
Lindsay Mormon.
Samantha Simon.
Colin White.
Katie Lipte.
Brendan Furlong.
Malik Robison.
Desi Window.
I know there's some people from Brooks here because I saw them. There they are. Come on, move over this way. Come on, now you can see yourself on TV. All of ya, keep moving. More, a little more. Come on, come on. Come on. There we go.
Okay.
All right, good evening. I'm Keith Wood, Principal of Brooks Middle School, Members of the Board of Education, Senior Leadership, Dr. Mitchum. Thank you guys for providing the opportunity to recognize the successes of our staff and students and their achievements. Gives me pleasure to, oh, and to the community as well, it gives me pleasure to bring forward Mr. Schwartz, our math club coach, who will tell you a little bit about our math contest winners and introduce them to you.
Good evening, I'm David Schwartz, I'm an 8th grade science teacher at Brooks and coach of the math team, and Members of School Board, Dr. Mitchum, I thank you very much for having us out tonight and recognizing our math elites. And I'd like to thank Mrs. Vay for putting this together, and it's a monumental task to write and score that many tests for the Valley View Middle Schools, and we competed in April, all five middle schools competed. We had teams in 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade, and our algebra team. And I thank everyone for coming out here, I thank very much our math teachers for doing all the heavy lifting. The coaching is easy at that point, they're doing all the math, we're just putting it all together and making sure that they are there and fit and ready to perform. And I would like to thank all of the parents for coming out tonight and supporting us on the academic team. Madison Mack, 6th grade. Peyton Schaefer, who's not able to be here, oh, there she is, I'm sorry, I didn't see you come in. Azra Wazir, not here. Hannah Smith. 7th grader, Giselle Cruz. 8th grader, Gabby Gentile. 8th grader, Rohit Banerjee. 8th grade, J.C. D. Dominico. 8th grader, Zach Fassi. 8th grade, Jeremy Kerovich. 8th grade, Jordan Taylor. 8th grade, Preston Scott. 8th grader, Jenny Hernandez. 8th grader, Ashby Martin. 8th grader, Rachel Tomey, and 8th grader Kurt Everly, who was also not able to be here.
Next, Illinois Youth Digital Safety Contest, first-place winners. And before you go any further, you have to explain to the audience what a digital safety contest is. Thank you.
Certainly.
I know, but most people don't.
It was a contest where the state sponsored a anti-bullying theme this year, and so it was sent out to all of the middle schools to see if there was anyone that would be interested in submitting a video. And certainly, I'm standing before you this evening with our first-place Lucanzik winners, so that is certainly very, very exciting. We, as a district and as a school, obviously take bullying very seriously, and so the young people and our teacher sponsor who put this video together, it was just our way of, again, putting out that message to the community and to the entire state of Illinois, the seriousness of bullying and the stance that we take as a school as well as a district.
Thank you.
Are AV guys gonna be able to put this on the-
that took place at the Governor's Mansion. It was without a doubt not only an honor to represent Lucanzik Middle School, but also Valley View School District at this event. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Mrs. Arnold, our Applied Technology Teacher, who worked with our students to create this work of art.
Thank you, Mrs. Roberson. I have a couple of our stars here with us tonight, unfortunately, everybody couldn't make it. Jordan Sandeman. We also had Pedro Candia, Haley Parks, Ethan Whitmarsh, Malik Tifa, and Jonathan Candia. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Illinois Letters and Literature Contest Finalists.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Senior Leadership, Faculty, Staff, and Community Members. It is an honor to stand before you as an administrator at Martinez Middle School, as you are about to meet one of our extraordinary and talented students. To make that introduction, we have one of our 8th grade Language Arts Teachers, Ms. Wendy Stright.
Thank you. I'm here because of my student, Visette Valdez. She entered our contest, Letters About Literature. It's an annual contest that the state of Illinois puts on every year. There were 5,490 students that entered the contest, and Visette's piece was chosen as a finalist piece out of all of those papers, which is something we're very proud of her for. Her paper, Letters About Literature, is an opportunity for a student to actually write a letter to an author, and it's not a fan letter. The goal is to write a piece to let the author know how the piece that you read, their story that they wrote, how it impacted you in some way. And tonight, I'd like to read just a small piece from the conclusion of her letter. It was a letter to Scott Westerfield, and his book is called "The Uglies." This is what Visette wrote: "Nevertheless, I am beautiful. It is what you are on the inside that makes you who you are and not the outside. I may not be the best-looking, but character counts. Like tally, I have a best friend who likes me for who I am, not what I look like. I am not tall, fast, skinny, or any way near perfect. Not everyone may like me because I don't look the way they want me to, but I have it all, Scott Westerfield, I have it all. And as you can see, Visette is a beautiful person, inside and out."
Come on, Larry.
Thank you, President Quigley. Good evening, Members of the Board of Education, Valley View Community Members. I have the pleasure tonight to introduce Mrs. Sharon Peterson, the Media Center Director at Oakview.
Thank you, Mr. Pinseyak. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Members of the School Board and also the district administration for giving us this opportunity to honor one of our students at Oakview School. Tonight, we're here to honor Andrea Chart. She's right here, a 5th grade student from Mr. Mullen's class. Mr. Mullen's back there in the corner by the... Stand up and come up here, Mr. Mullen. Andrea Chart has attended Oakview since kindergarten, and in all of her time with us, she's been an exemplary student. She's both in her schoolwork and in her citizenship. And on that note, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Andrea's parents, who are also here tonight, because they partnered with us in her educational process, and I know they're very proud of her accomplishments. This school year, Andrea did something that no other student at our school has ever done. We've had the Accelerator Reader Program in our building since 2003, and it's been funded by the Valley View Educational Richmond Foundation. I wrote the grant originally in 2003, brought it in, and we've been funding it ever since. It's been wonderful. But she did something that no other student has done before. She earned over 1,000 points, actually 1,103 points this year in this program. Now, what does that mean? Well, it means she read 137 chapter books, and this is one of the chapter books that she read. This is a 7.8 reading level. She's a 5th grade student. So it's just one of the 137 books that she read this year. And so in earning 1,000 points, she also engaged in a contest that we had where I gave them a two-month period to earn 250 points. Everyone started at zero. I told all the kids that, even though Andrea already had amassed about 700 points at that time, I said, "Everyone has the same chance." Well, she rose to the occasion, and she earned 275 points. And she earned herself a Barnes &amp; Noble NOOK, which I'm going to present to her tonight. It's a NOOK simple reader. Here's the NOOK here, that she can read more books on. Wonderful. And she also got a nice case for it, and she also got a charger for it and all that stuff, so she gets everything there tonight. We also have a certificate that we're going to present to her, and I'm going to have Principal Pinceyak present that certificate to her. Also, in doing these tests, she earned a 93.5% average on these tests. So that's in that regards, too. So she's just a wonderful student and a great reader, and I'm just so proud of her, and I think everyone else should be proud of her, too.
Thank you. I bet she gets more out of that NOOK than she does that certificate we gave her. Plus, it's a lot lighter than carrying that looked like worn piece that she had back there.
Her teacher wants to say something.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
Please.
I just want to say one more thing. We took the MAP test for the first time this year in the district, and Andrea is, in addition to being a good student, well-behaved. And I've been teaching, trying to teach, for over 40 years. You chose, doesn't it? Anyway, I want Dr. Mitchum and everyone to understand also that, as students go, you don't see a lot of people like this. If there was a MAP test for parents, these, in my opinion, would reach the 100th percentile. I want you to also know, and this will be the last thing I say, that Andrea, in math, scored at the 99th percentile on the MAP test. And so, as a student and as a person, this family could not get higher regards from me. Thanks.
We say it time and time and time again. It starts at home. You've all heard us say it. You've heard us say it throughout the meetings that we've had over the past several months since I've been up here, the past five years. We always say it. Good kids, it starts at home with the folks. Whether it's a one-parent family or a two-parent family, or however many parents you might have in your household, it always starts at home. Moving down the agenda, game design and web design competition.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to introduce John Sullivan, our Career and Technology Teacher at Bolingbrook High School.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the board, senior leadership, Dr. Mitchum, and members of the community. My name is John Sullivan. I am a teacher from the Career and Tech Ed Department at Bolingbrook High School. For the past seven years, I've had the honor and privilege of helping design, develop, and grow the web design and animation classes, as well as the Advanced Web Design Class, which ran for the first time this year. I am very excited about the new graphic design and multimedia classes that I will be teaching next fall. I would like to take a moment to thank Ms. Brigida Altman, my department chair, Mr. Shannon McCarthy, Mr. Don Tifano, the Board of Education, senior leadership, for all your support with allowing us to stay up to date with all the materials and software that I currently have in my lab that we keep up with what's out there in the industry today. As I'm sure you're aware, today's youth is growing up learning and living with technology every moment of their lives. So the area of web design and animation and gaming continues to grow with popularity among students. The industry is huge and continues to grow, offering a wide variety of interesting career paths that many students wish to pursue. To help you understand the growth, when I first started teaching at BHS, there were only a few selected colleges that offered degrees in the area of animation and gaming. Now, almost all colleges offer degrees in this area. Each year, I have more and more students going on to college pursuing degrees in these areas. Over the past several years, I've had students enter the web design contests at Joliet Junior College. I've seen the popularity grow at this contest from just a couple of high schools to, this year, 15 high schools in the contest. We at BHS have had great success each year, usually winning or placing at the contests. It's a wonderful event that Joliet Junior College puts on with a nice banquet, award ceremony, that our students attend with their families, taking home nice prizes, plaques, and cash awards. With that said, we have a very creative student, Mark Batong, who placed 3rd this year with his very creative web design layout. Mark also has created several t-shirt designs and logos that have been used at BHS and clubs and activities. He also was presented with the Outstanding Achievement in Graphic Design Award at our Honors Day Ceremony. He is going to Columbia College pursuing a degree in film programming. Congratulations, Mark. This was the second year that Joliet Junior College held a game design contest in which students created actual games. We started doing this game design this year in our Advanced Web Design and Animation course, and we had several students do very well at the competition. In the group design, and I don't think they're here, but we had Bianca Ibatoli and Nicholas Corta take 2nd place. Both of these students are very talented, as Bianca will be going on to North Central College for graphic design, and Nicholas will be going to Tribeca Flashpoint for animation and game programming. I would like to also mention that Nicholas was awarded the Outstanding Achievement in Period Leadership in Advanced Web Design and Animation at our Honors Day program as well. I believe Nicholas is on a senior trip along with a few others, so. Now, there were some individual game design contests as well, and we actually swept first through honorable mention. Taking honorable mention was Dante Hawkins. Dante? Dante will be going to Westwood College pursuing a degree in gaming art. Congratulations. Taking 3rd place, and he's not here today, is Nico Diaz. And Nico also created several logos, including, I'm an assistant coach for the girls' cross-country team, so he created a logo for the girls' cross-country team. He was also awarded the Outstanding Achievement Student of the Year Award for the Advanced Web Design Class at our Honors Day, and he's also on his senior trip. 2nd place went to Emmett Miller, who will be returning next year to BHS. He's a very talented student, and his aspirations are going to military and pursue computers. So congratulations to Emmett. And our first-place winner, unfortunately, is not here. I think he's also on a senior trip, so. Stanziel Castell-Pau, who will be going into college for engineering. So thank you again for inviting us to join you tonight, and I look forward to coming back next year with some more winners. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And last but not least, the Golden Apple Award.
Good evening, senior leadership, board members, and Valley View community. Before I get started, I'd like to invite our little golden apples to the podium with us, please. So if you're a student in Mrs. Zider's class, please come forward.
Come on, guys, girls. Get on up there.
From what I understand, there were also older students here getting awards who were once in Mrs. Zider's class, and that just shows us the impact that she has made in our community, and not just at Pioneer Elementary School, but in Valley View School community. She is currently on the math committee, as well as the literacy committee, and she's made a great impact in the work that the committees are doing. Mrs. Zider was nominated for the 2012 Golden Apple Award. She's a finalist 32. There were over 560 nominees, and Mrs. Zider was among the 32 finalists. Mrs. Zider has been a consistent presence at Pioneer for 11 years. She has taught bilingual kindergarten in other school districts, along with reading recovery, preschool, and 2nd grade. She also taught library sciences as an LMC director before coming to the classroom as a primary teacher. Mrs. Zider encourages her students to remain involved in the learning process by actively reviewing learning targets and making sure that students are aware of what they should be doing and learning for each content area. Students are always eager to let visitors know what their learning targets are, what they're working on, and their plans on how they're going to hit the target after each lesson. Our school and district and community are very fortunate to have Mrs. Zider on our team. Her professionalism, commitment, and passion for young learners and the entire educational community are unmatched. Mrs. Zider is an outstanding educator, and not for the sake of winning this award or for the recognition or for the prize, but to help every child experience the joy of learning, not only as first graders, but for their entire lifetime. She has also made an impact with our parents. She includes them consistently in the classroom, and that makes such a difference. And President Quigley, I'd like to back you up again with the parents and how important parent involvement is with your students in school. It has made such an impact at Pioneer Elementary School. We keep our doors open, and we encourage all parents to visit. And Mrs. Zider is so wonderful in including our parents in all of the activities that she participates in with her students. So again, congratulations, Mrs. Zider. We are so very proud of you. This is such a wonderful honor, and we hope to continue to encourage and support all of the work that she does for our students, staff, and parents here in the Valley View community. Congratulations.
I just would like to thank everybody for recognizing both my class and myself. This has truly been a gift that just Golden Apple keeps on giving, because just when you think it's over, something else comes along. But from the buttons that the children made, and I even got a hand-painted apple that really meant more to me even than the plaque that I got. So it's been a community event here with the kids just on board, and the whole thing has just been amazing. So I just want to say thank you again, and I just am humbled by it. I want to accept that on behalf of both hard-working Pioneer teachers and all the hard-working teachers in our district. So thank you, everybody.
They ought to call them the Fun Shoe Class. Look at all those shoes. Liaison reports. Oh, yeah, if... This is a good time to get out of here if you don't want to be here for the business portion of the meeting. As the room is emptying out, I'll go ahead and bring my doom and gloom that I normally bring after being in Springfield. Today, the House of Representatives brought forth a bill that will increase the pension burden on the school district approximately, Mr. Gazzafi, $6 million in the next three years?
Right, beginning in '13, '14.
So it'll be $6 million in '13, '14?
It'll start with $1 million compounded, so over three years, that will be $6 million.
So that's not good news. Obviously, we will be, along with many, many school districts and associations throughout state, fighting to protect our tax dollars locally. And I will say it again, and I've said it 100 times from this dais, the state needs to pay its share of education. They're talking about changing the formulas by which we get... The foundation-level formulas are being reduced. They're reducing transportation dollars to the district. It's all coming from someplace, and if it doesn't come from someplace, it's going to be reductions around here that none of us want to see. There are going to be reductions in transportation. There'll be reductions in programs and possibly classes that we offer. Increased class sizes. There's all kinds of bad things that come out of this. And again, please contact your state representatives. I don't care where you live. If you live in Valley View, fine, contact Emily McCasie, Representative McGuire, or Senator McGuire. Wherever you may live, talk to those people. They're in the phone book. Call them up. Call their officer. They're in Springfield for the next 72 hours. They're not leaving. Call their Springfield office, call their local office, and tell them, "Leave education alone and pay your duty." Thank you. We live within the means that they give us. Now they're pulling the rug out from under us, and it's just not fair. So that's my liaison report. The good news is... Anybody got any good news? Nope. Well, there you go. Audience participation. Is anybody who would like to address the board this evening with their ideas or views? Seeing none. Moving down the agenda, Action I... Oh, I'm sorry. Please step up. Oh, come on up. Please state your name and where you're from.
Sure. My name is Andrew Pialik.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Give them the microphone. There you go.
I have a student at Jamie McGee who's in 1st grade, and then I have a 3rd grader who's over at RC Hill. I wanted to say hello to Ms. Venus Smith. I wanted to... Now you know the face with our chat yesterday. Very commendable. She called me yesterday on Memorial Day. I sent her a letter of inquiry about the current changes in the challenge program, and she and I talked for over an hour, and you enlightened me, and I liked a lot of the long-term visions that you had for the district. But even though we didn't articulate it to each other, there was two particular issues that I think maybe we agreed to disagree on, and I wanted to broach it here. As Ms. Smith knows, when we were talking on the phone yesterday, I was hung up on the COGAT. For 1st graders in the past, the COGAT score, that IQ score, was a minimum of 116. My eldest son, who is over in 3rd grade at RC Hill, met that COGAT requirement and is loving it and succeeding it, as well as all the other students are over there, because Mrs. Rera's the bomb. Unbeknownst to anybody, at least in the parents that I have talked to at Jamie McGee and the community, a committee had formed, and the requirements for the challenge program had changed. I know you had used the MAP, you said, as the screening tool, and then kids were invited, if they met a certain requirement, to take the COGAT. My son earned a COGAT score that's been used in the past that would enable him to be at RC Hill or Jonas Salk in the fall. And because of this 10-IQ bump on the COGAT, he's no longer eligible. Now, as Ms. Smith and I had talked, they are... The committee is currently reviewing kids who are borderline, as my son is. He's going to take an additional assessment. So there are some... He's going to take an additional assessment, so there are some leadway here. However, to me, there was three specific incidences where I can think of that I guess as the committee, and I wish parents and gifted teachers would have been on the committee, that I guess I wished they would have looked at the COGAT and maybe thought that the requirement was too high.
Oh, Mrs. Reblich, remember, we had talked about, there's a transitional piece where we looked at it as a data and assessment department, looked at the criteria of surrounding districts, and looked at a COGAT score that's comparable to the new Common Core State standards. We are going to be forming a committee at the end of July, and we're going to have a fair process of selection of parents from our Rommeaville and Bolingbrook communities, and we'll look at making sure that we have correct criteria to appropriately identify what is a gifted student and also be culturally responsible, responsive in the criteria development. We are looking at MAP as our screener, and in previous years, it limited the number of students which would even be found to be eligible for testing. So we've had higher numbers this year of screening students for the gifted program, and in years past, it was very limited based on the ITBS test. Now, we did phase out the ITBS test, MAP being formative, and having three times a year in which we're able to really track a student's growth. That was a more appropriate and valid assessment to help us, to really guide us to say, okay, is this a gifted child, or is this a high student? And remember, we talked about the differentiation piece. So if children who are at the cusp, if they don't meet the criteria for the gifted program, because honestly, not all children will qualify as gifted, we also have to make sure that we are allowing appropriate instructional services in the classroom to appropriately address those high students. And so that's why it's important that MAP allows us to do that, which in the past, we didn't have information to help us to particularly target areas of deficit for those students who are high. We want to make sure that we meet them appropriately where they are. But in the past, we didn't have that information, and now we're able to differentiate according to what the MAP data tells us. And remember, we had talked about there are different goal strands underneath the reading and the MAP, so we're able to really appropriately meet those students' needs, even if they don't qualify for the gifted program, because in all honesty, not all children will qualify for the gifted, but we're not going to leave those children behind. We're going to make sure that we're appropriately addressing their needs instructionally.
Um, and, and I, I agree. I understand what you're saying. Um, I guess I wish that someone on this committee would have called, for example, Mrs. Rear, and said, "Mrs. Rear, are the majority of your kids succeeding cognitively, socially, et cetera?" Um, based on the conversation I have heard, I've had with her concerning my son, as well as other parents that you talked through during, during the course of the year for playdates or whatever, I would think that she would say yes. Well, then I guess that I would like then to, some research to have been done then. Those third graders who are succeeding right now, how many of them at the first-grade level actually met the COGAT score of one-twenty-six? My guess is out of the thirty kids in her classroom, which she has right now, it would be single-digit, a low number. Second, you had said that you had consulted Naperville and Schaumburg, um, about their, uh, challenge program, and I know that that's a typical protocol, and I think we had talked about it on the phone. We are so much more culturally diverse. There's socioeconomic, uh, difference. Also, the level of education of parents. We all know, the more educated you are, whether that's a master's degree or a post-doctoral degree, they understand and prioritize and place great significance on education in the home. I don't think comparing us with Schaumburg and Naperville, and I, and I think I would have said to myself, if I was a member on the committee, wow, if their COGAT minimum is one-twenty-six, Bolingbrook maybe one day might get there, but isn't there now. And the last component to what you were saying, a hundred and twenty-five kids existed at Jamie McGee in the first grade. There's five classrooms. Let's guess, there's twenty-five. There was only five kids that met that brilliant one-twenty-six COGAT score. That's not even ten percent.
We actually have brought to the table, because I know that administration at McGee has been very hard at work, making sure that they brought forward children who are on the cusp. So we actually looked at more students than the five that you're mentioning. I believe we looked at a total of twenty or twenty-five. I don't have that data in front of me. And so we really looked at making sure that not only did we involve the data department, but we also talked with the building administration, and we also received teacher recommendation and looked at that classroom piece, because we want to make sure that we don't just rule out just because they did not make that COGAT score. We looked at if they made typical growth on the MAP. Uh, we also suggested a psychologist's assessment, the WIS, which you will be, uh, actually part of. We are scheduling that. I actually made contact with the building administration today, so we're scheduling that, uh, for your son today. So we just want to make sure that we're listing, listing different variables, because it's not going to make or break a child if they don't meet a certain test criteria. We have to look at different variables. But according to Common Core State standards, we want to make sure that we are aligning ourselves with the new rigorous expectations that we're charged with and also be culturally responsible. Now, mind you, the districts that I share with you were only samples. We did a comprehensive search nationwide. I only gave you a couple. We did have some in our demographics, and if you allow me to call you again, I can give you some districts that have similar demographics that Valley View does. We wanted to make sure, though, that not just COGAT was factored in. That's why we went back to the table. We looked at all of the other, all of the other students that did not quite meet that criteria, and we've actually looked at allowing some other students into the program, because we had other data to support and justify them being in that program.
It just sounds like a lot more work that your committee had to do instead of maybe...
It's not a committee, and I want to make sure that you know that it's not a committee...
Or, I'm sorry, or the group that is evaluating who's accepting it to the program.
We will have a committee with all of our stakeholders, represented parents and teachers alike, because that is a very critical topic that we want to address.
Sure it is.
And as I mentioned, in the year twenty thirteen, fourteen, we're looking at a model, and we'll investigate that at committee level, a push-in, pull-out system where we have something available in all buildings, not just RC Hill and Salk, where then we can broaden that program so that we're meeting the needs of all of our gifted students. But keep in mind that not all students will qualify for the gifted program, and that's just how it is. Uh, so we want to make sure that we are addressing our high students' needs as well. We don't want to leave anyone behind, because I know in our conversation yesterday, that was really a focus of yours, to ensure that you're not leaving anybody behind.
It's, it's just difficult when one son is there now, who earned that one-sixteen to one-twenty-five, but it's good enough, good, not good enough two years later. Um, I do have one more concern, and then I'll let other people speak, because I definitely know why I monopolize anything. Um, if my son does end up going back to Jamie McGee in the fall, which is fine, there's phenomenal educators there also. I don't want the ball to be dropped it, dropped on all these first graders who are in one-sixteen to one-twenty-five on the COGAT. For example, at Jamie McGee, they have a free reading and math program for the struggling learners. Maybe in the fall, then, for these kids that are in one-sixteen to one-twenty-five, there will be an enrichment-free after-school program for reading and math. Um, another suggestion I had, up until these gifted sites are up and running at the local elementary schools, maybe we could have a floating gifted teacher, so that if my son is sitting in the second-grade classroom next year, and in, in September, the teacher's saying, "Okay, open up your basal reader," and it's second grade, first month, and he is reading, as well as all these other kids that are in these high COGAT scores and are above average, and he's reading at the end of the second-grade, beginning-third-grade reading level, it would be great for a gifted teacher then to swoop in and take these kids who are smart and motivated and want to continue to be future leaders of our country and work with them on, either with a more challenging basal reader, or with a novel that covers the same curricular or thematic concepts that the regular classroom teacher wants to cover. Um, the third, the third thing I wanted to say, and I know we talked about this at Great Lane, and being a former educator, I get the differentiation. However, my first-grade son is in Mrs. O'Connell's class in first grade, and by the way, she walks on water. Okay, she never sits down. She's up and around, positive, you know, encouraging. I'm in there every other Wednesday for an hour and a half, so I've seen her. However, in her classroom of twenty-five, if she is expected, and she's cream of the crop, if she is expected to differentiate for every student and every student's academic and social need, it's literally impossible. She has above-average, average, struggling learners, ADHD, Asperger's, emotionally deprived, behaviorally disordered. There's a whole gamut in there, and I just, I just, I don't know. Maybe tracking reading and math for these kids next year might be a solution. I just don't want them, and I'm very passionate about this. I just don't want these bright kids to go back to the classroom, and you've snatched this wonderful opportunity from them, and you haven't cushioned or replaced it with anything.
I agree, and then I agree that we need to ensure that we're meeting all learners' needs. It's in the way we group children within the classroom instructional time, so we have groups of homogeneous learners within groups, and so that teachers can better maximize their time, so it's not like they're having to develop twenty-five different lessons, but they're able to create different groups, and within that group, they have homogeneous learners that have around the same RIT level, and they have certain, uh, target areas underneath goal strands, that they're able to adapt their instruction and meet those learners' needs and meet them where they are. And so you have to be, be creative, and it has to also be a grade-level team planning that out, and so that teachers actually share the wealth. This is the model that I came from. Grade-level teams actually collaborate, and in a group learn, it's flexible, so no one's stuck in a, in a certain instructional level in a certain classroom with a certain teacher. There's mobility throughout the grade level, so they're sharing kids. It's not just your child. It's our children, sharing students and being flexible in our reading groupings and being flexible in our math groupings, and we'll get there. But that's not all on the classroom teacher. That's a grade-level team supporting one another, and that's the building administration and the district supporting one another. So the grouping takes place, and you're maximizing your instruction, and if you're really thinking about it and strategizing, you can really make sure that you're making maximum use of that reading time and that math time. It's not just on the classroom teacher. There are supports in place, and we're looking at that model to make sure that we have some type of block scheduling built in to support that classroom teacher, because we don't want our teacher to fail, because they are charged, and we are charged, with meeting each child's needs. And so that's a really developed piece, and that's something that a committee can talk with.
And I hope it's a win-win for these kids next year, who are bright and motivated and really, in my esteem, in my belief, deserve to be at Jonas Salk or RC Hill in the fall.
Ma'am, ma'am, I want to thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I want to thank you for coming. I want to thank you for expressing your passion about your, your child and the other, other children.
And other children.
And, and I think that, um, I'm, I'm sure that when you talk to Venus and Moore, and you guys will work you, the particulars out with your child. Um, but what, what I want you to know is, a lot of what you said, um, we, we talk about. And on the academic committee, um, I've asked the administration to prepare something on the gifted thing, so I'm going to make sure we get your name, and we invite you out to be, we have parents on that committee, and get your, get your...
Yes, Venus mentioned, Venus Smith mentioned that. Sure, sign me up.
Get you out there, and because there are, part of our problem in our system right now is there's gaps in our system.
Sure.
And the gaps happen all over the place, in the gifted program, at the bottom, in the middle, and we're working diligently to correct those gaps, um, in our system. Our systems are not perfect, and, and some of our systems are far from perfect. And so what, what we end up doing now is leaning really heavily on our great teachers to fill in those gaps, as we try to get our systems to be better, to fix that. So we're going to work on that, and we'll get you involved in that, if you want to be involved in that.
Sure, I would.
Um, and then as a side note, uh, this comes up every year around this time, uh, there are no plans to get rid of the challenge program in, in this district. It's not been talked about as a budget-cut item. Um, there are no plans for that, and it'd probably be hypocritical, because there's three or four of us up here that children have benefited from the challenge program, and so if it was so great for our kids, obviously it'd be great for, you know, everybody's kids in the district. So that's a side note, because that comes up every time around this year, that, uh, oh, challenge, we're getting rid of challenge. There is no plans to get rid of challenge. Their challenge will be here next year and for the foreseeable future.
And thank you, Ms. Smith, for being patient again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving down the agenda, student due process. Dr. Mitchum.
Um, I got lost after that conversation. I ask that the board approve these items as presented.
Motion would be in order. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowles?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Second and final reading of Board Policy six-three, six-two-three-five, access to electronic networks.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I also ask that the board approve this policy as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowles?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Grading scale.
Yes, Mr. President. I ask that the board approve this policy, revised grading policy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion?
Yep.
Uh, hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowles?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next on the agenda, middle school promotion policy. Oh, I'm sorry, that's been removed. We forgot to address it up. Action reports. Ms. Smith?
Yes. Uh, tonight, I bring forward three different programs for board approval. We'll look at the first one, Children's Progress Adaptive Assessment, or acronym CPAA. Approval is being sought for the adoption of the assessment program, Children's Progress Adaptive Assessment, for the self-contained bilingual students in grades K through two, and a general information report was presented to the Board of Education on May fourteenth, and a summary of the background, need, criteria, and cost were provided at that time.
Thank you. Any, I need a motion before we go further.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. A roll call vote.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowles?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next, the Benchmark Literacy Program.
Yes, President Quigley. Approval is also being sought for the adoption of a new K through five literacy program titled Benchmark Literacy, and the purchase of corresponding materials, resources, and support. The general information report was also presented the last board meeting on May fourteenth, and a summary of the background, need, and criteria and cost were also provided at that time.
So moved.
Motion and seconded. Mr. Goojus, Mr. Bowles. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowles?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. And last but not least, the MAP assessment for ninth, tenth, thirtieth...
That's right. Couldn't have said any better. Last but not least, we have our Measure of Academic Progress, uh, our more affectionately called MAP for grades nine through ten, and approval is being sought tonight for the implementation of MAP for students in grades nine and ten for the school year two thousand twelve, thirteen. A general information report was also presented to the board at the last meeting on May fourteenth, and a summary of the background, rationale, usage, cost, and sources of funding were also provided at that time.
Roll call, oh, I'm sorry. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bowles?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Moving down the agenda, Mr. Ghazafi.
Four actions for your consideration this evening. Uh, first one is a recommendation to renew our contract with our insurance consultant, Mesero. Uh, as an example of their services provided to us in this past year, they've reduced our stop-loss coverage quotations by fourteen percent. I've also outlined all of the services that they've provided to us. I won't, uh, read them to you, but they're there for your, uh, review and consideration, and so, excuse me, uh, very pleased with the services they provided with, uh, to us, uh, and therefore make the recommendation to renew their, uh, services for the twelve-thirteen fiscal year at the existing annual fee of eighty thousand dollars, which is about four fee of $80,000, which is about four tenths of 1 percent of our overall insurance program.
Slow moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Roofing project, Evito Martinez?
Yes, we are asking for your approval to accept the low bidder for approximately 15,700 square feet of roof at the Martinez Middle School. Bennett and Brucel Roofing, who's done a lot of work in the district over the past many years, is the low bidder at a cost of $541,300 to be budgeted and paid for by the Building Operations and Maintenance Fund for 12-13 school year budget.
Motion?
Slow moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Discussion. I have just one quick question, Gary. We're doing all the work in there, right? We're not doing the...
We are not exercising the deduct change orders due to the extensive work that Building and Operations is doing this year. We did ask for bids, but...
Okay. So we're not going to do the conduit? We're going to wait?
We're going to have them do it. It's part of the base bid.
Oh, okay.
It is part of the base bid.
I just want to make sure I read that right.
The alternates were a deduct.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you very much. We have motion and a second.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Action Report 11.3 is an amendment to the All-Day Kindergarten Contract, composed of two parts, first being the RC Hill Site Improvement Project. We brought this to you before, and this project will include new parking, vehicle drop-off and pickup lanes, a new playground area, site lighting, and various site amenities at RC Hill Elementary. This project will be paid for via a grant from the Village of Romeoville, via their tax increment finance, or TIF allocation, and this was part of the agreement with the school district for our support to extend the TIF that was due to expire by an additional eight years. And so, again, they have worked with us to approve these modifications, if you will, to the campus at RC Hill, and we are recommending approval of the contract with White to do the work. The second piece is the technology infrastructure improvements for the kindergarten first and fifth grade and middle school rooms that were previously addressed at the board meeting on April 16th, and so you can see the schedule there. We anticipate the cost there of $877,000 to provide electricity and associated panel work, to provide adequate power to allow us to add the multitude of technologies such as the smart board, projectors, and computers at all of our elementaries and our middle schools. And so it makes sense for us to have White supervise and oversee the work since they're already at all of our elementaries. We are recommending at this time that the GMAC contract be amended to include the two costs defined above, the amount of $2,164,483. This is a change order that's in the best interest of the district and is authorized by law.
Is that, oh, I can't do that tone. Motion?
Slow moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Well, a couple things. On the, has that been bid yet, Mr. Lopez? Do we know if that's the final number?
It's being bid right now.
It is being bid, okay. So it may come in less than that?
Sorry.
Might come in a little less than the estimates? Thank you. Second thing, I just want to acknowledge the Village of Romeoville with the assistance at RC Hill. I forget how long ago that was when we signed a letter. Gosh, October, maybe?
Yeah, it's...
But the city administrator, Mr. Golden, and Mayor Noak and I, and I believe, I know Gary met with them individually, I know I met with them, but for them to, for us to help them, them to help us, this is one of the reasons to do a TIF, and it's to help areas that need help, and this will pay for itself pretty much on the front end, which is kind of rare for a TIF. Usually you've got to kind of wait sometimes, but I just want to acknowledge those two individuals from the village, Mayor Noak and Mr. Golden, for their assistance in this and moving forward. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Cafeteria tables and chairs?
Yes, we are recommending that the bid for 178 cafeteria tables, 340 chairs, be awarded to Lowry McDonald. They were the lowest responsible bidder since the lowest bidder failed to include the chairs in the bid as specified. We've done a lot of work with Lowry over the years, and this will basically take care of all of our schools that have loose tables. Everybody will have new tables. Many of them are in disrepair, difficult to open and close, and so this will be paid for by the food service department budget, and we are recommending, again, Lowry McDonald is the low bidder in an amount of $145,158.
Slow moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? What do you do with the old chairs and tables?
Most of the chairs and tables will be broken down and recycled for their recycle value.
Do we do that, or is that part of the bid?
Our BOM typically will warehouse them until such time as there's downtime, and then they'll scrap them.
Okay. Just curious. It's a lot of chairs and tables. Motion and second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Ms. Hawks, Human Resources?
Thank you, President Quigley. Action Report 12.1 this evening, Consolidated Action Report for Certified and Classified Personnel, seeking your approval on 96 items for certified, 52 for classified, four for certified administrative personnel, and one for classified administrative personnel.
Motion would be in order.
Slow moved.
A second would be in order.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please. I was going to ask, how far into the recall process?
We've completed all of the placement for the involuntary transfers. On Friday, we started the RIF recall. We've completed 41 out of the 266. So we're moving along steadily, but it will take a little while.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Before I go on to my next action report, I would like to mention that in the consolidated action report that you just approved, was a recommendation to hire Erica Ekstrom as the new Executive Director for Student Services. So Erica, if you want to come up to the podium, and as she's on her way, I'd like to just share a little information with you. Erica's been with the district for six years, and three of those years were as a special ed coordinator and two as a student services administrator. Erica has a long list of accomplishments that will be very beneficial to her position as Executive Director for Student Services, and we'd like to welcome you to this position.
President Quigley, distinguished board members, Dr. Mitchum, senior leadership, and the Valley View community, thank you for this amazing opportunity to serve our students, our families, and our larger community. I am honored, humbled, and appreciative. Thank you to the leaders who have come before me, especially Dr. David Hale, for his commitment and his devotion. Thank you to Dr. Dee Williams, student service administrators, building leaders, and teams in general for their dedication to their students. I look forward to continuing the collaborative partnership between Student Services, Building Leadership, and District Office to develop and implement best practice instruction and programming in order to ensure positive student achievement. To a building near and dear to me, Step, I am continually inspired by your dedication to your students and their achievement. It's been my pleasure to serve as your building principal, as well as your leader. To the students and parents of Valley View School District, thank you for your constant source of inspiration and motivation. Our students continually strive to reach new heights. I look forward to working in partnership with all of you to ensure that our students reach their goals and dreams. To a special family, my family, thank you for your constant love and support. I would not be able to follow my passion as well as my dreams if it was not for the love and support of my parents, my family, my friends, my children, but especially my husband, John. If you know me, you know I'm big on sports analogies. Michael Jordan once said, "Talent wins games, but teamwork wins championships." Our students have much talent, and they have the teamwork of everyone in Valley View to help them achieve all their goals. I look forward to working collaboratively with all stakeholders to ensure that our belief that all students, including those with special needs, achieve positive student outcomes by being college and career-ready. This will be made a reality by making sure students have access to a rigorous curriculum, the implementation of best practice and research-based instruction, by utilizing both formative and summative assessment to guide our instruction and our program, and by being held accountable for these positive outcomes. I am excited to be a member of this team and to serve the students, the families, the staff, and the members of the Valley View community. Thank you.
Action Report 12.2, Resolution Number 13.15, authorizing dismissal of educational support personnel employees for reasons other than reduction in force.
Still moved?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Secretary Bull?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Dr. Mitchum, information reports.
Actually, those are mine under Dr. Mitchum. The first is Information Report 13.2, Annual Consolidated Instructional Operations Software Maintenance Renewal Report. This has a list of 13 software titles that we are asking for, we will be asking for your approval at our next meeting in June. We wanted to give you an opportunity to ask any questions or just see what the action will entail. And so again, I'm open to any questions you have, or certainly you can contact me offline if necessary. The second item is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Does this have any licenses that we need to be aware of attached to it?
Not sure what you're asking.
I'm looking on the software maintenance.
All of these are license renewals.
Correct. I guess to the individual licenses, not, do we have another cloud issue potentially, is what I'm asking?
The cloud is listed there, the Airacom software, as you refer to it, it does have a flat dollar figure, it's not an individual per head count license renewal, if that's what you're referring to.
Right, that's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, that is not, it's not on a per head basis. Some of these do, I believe Parent Link does, on a per student basis.
It's MAP per student.
I believe MAP is per student.
But we're fairly certain on the ones that have a per student, that we're going to either use all those or only pay for the ones that we use.
That is correct. You've made it very clear to us that we need to look at that, and we continue to beat up our vendors to make sure that that's how we're being charged.
Thank you.
What Mr. Goojus is referring to is there are some programs that discharge you by the number of students in your district. We didn't find out if that was fair, particularly when we have 18,000 students and only 600 of them using one particular program that he recently referenced. So I think we saved several tens of thousands of dollars, correct? By not renewing that last year, whatever, getting it to renew it only for those students. Thank you, Gary. Next?
Next is our first reading Board Policy 4:30, Revenue Investments. As we continue to look at ways to enhance our revenue, we've talked to Dais before about the district's potential in investing in tax anticipation notes, otherwise known as TOS, and because this is a new area of investment for the district, we wanted to make doubly sure, if you will, that this type of investment was allowable. As we were getting ready to put a bid in on a TAW, we sought out advice to make sure that we were indeed authorized to put forth that bid, and at that time, we felt like we better ask Chapman and Cutler to give us a final review, at which time they did, and the changes to the investment policy are attached herein. So again, first reading here, we'll be bringing this back to you in June for a final reading. Unfortunately, we kind of missed the window for TAWs, but we will be well poised to make that leap in the next go-round, probably in September.
Thank you, Gary. Again, we try to find any place we can squeeze a nickel or dime, and investments right now are just, are not very productive in any place. There is a bill in Springfield that may see the light of day before the end of session that will allow us to recapture some dollars against our cap in the bond world, so we'll see where that goes. Thanks for the hard work on that, and when you consult with Chapman and Cutler, they're probably the premier bond company, I'd say, in the United States for sure, if not the world, so. Thanks. Next, Legal Services Report.
I don't report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. AFT?
Don't report.
Thank you. Bellevue Counsel?
Don't report.
Bellevue Office Personnel Counsel?
Don't report.
Thank you. Any old business? Any new business?
Excuse me, President Quigley, I just want to take the opportunity to acknowledge the approval of the Summer Learning Experience Principals. We have Ebony Wallace, as well as Loretta Fertout, and wanted to also acknowledge the two SLE principals from the last board meeting on May 14th. We had Elizabeth Hornback, as well as Elizabeth Hornback and Tanya Higby, who was an external candidate. So congratulations to those principals for their appointment.
How many, speaking of summer programs, how many enrolled so far?
631.
Just a couple. I'm glad we rolled that program out.
So we've had significant growth.
641?
631.
Nice. Any questions from the public on actions we've taken this evening? Seeing none, hearing none. Any announcements by the board?
Yes, I want to congratulate all of our upcoming graduates for eighth grade and in high school, including Member Curran's daughter, I believe, is graduating this week. I also want to take a second to thank the Valley View teachers. There are moments where sometimes we bump heads, but I appreciate the teachers of Valley View's opinions and keep emailing me. I have a Valley View teacher that comes to every board meeting, and I know when I'm getting out of school because she rolls her eyes at me, but I appreciate that, because we're all pulling in the same direction. We may argue over the process that we get there, but I appreciate the work that you guys do, and we'll continue to keep doing this. So keep emailing me when you think that I stepped out of line, feel free to email me. I'll email you back. I may agree, I may not, but we're all pulling in the same direction, and that's what's exciting for me. And thanks to the teacher that comes here and helps really keep me aligned, too. I really appreciate that. She calls me, too, sometimes and says, "Rick, stop saying that," or "Rick, that was right on point." So I really appreciate that, too. And again, congratulations to the graduates.
I just want to acknowledge that we are still in the throes of negotiations with the contract with teachers. We had hoped to come to some resolution the last week. A group of us met on Friday night from 4:00 till 10:30 on a holiday weekend. I want to thank the staff, even though you get paid to be there, you still were there, and also the teachers that were there and your union representatives. I thought we were going to get close, but we'll still continue to work on that, and hopefully we'll get something done here in the next couple of weeks, and we'll be able to get it out to the teachers for a vote and bring it back here. I am not keen at all on the stuff that's going on in Springfield, though. I just, I think it's, I think that it's a shame that the General Assembly of the State of Illinois has decided to use education and pit education against local governments. They talked about taking the corporate property replacement tax, the CPPRT, away from our school district and every other school district. To Valley View, that's $10 million. Fortunately, that's been tabled, at least as far as I know, but the, for lack of a better term, pension dump back onto local districts, I find completely unacceptable. I hope you do, too, and we'll see where that goes, too, in the next few days in Springfield. But I just find it really shameful that the state has created 95 percent of its pension problems, and maybe we're responsible for some of it, too, over the years, with some of the systems that have been in place and some of the early buyouts and what have you that have been offered from districts from out the state. We're not immune to it, but the simple fact is they created most of their problem, and now they have one day woken up and said, "Hey, we've got a real problem here." Well, this problem's been going on for 35 years. State's $85 billion in the pension hole. Their annual budget is $65 billion. So do the math, doesn't take you long. I know they have money coming in in various places and so on and so forth to offset some of that, but the reality is, they've got a problem, and the idea and the concept of balancing it on our backs is just completely unacceptable. So please pass that along to, again, your representatives, your senators, any of you that else will listen for that matter, talk to your neighbors. So again, that's to conclude my rant from earlier tonight. Any other questions or announcements by the board? Summer's upon us. This is our last meeting before summer officially is over, so general public out there, kids are going to be running around on the bikes, on foot, on streets. Don't hit them with your cars, please, or don't hit them with anything else for that matter. So with that, motion to adjourn would be in order.
Slow moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, we stand adjourned. Have a great summer.[1789.71][1789.71][applause]